Good morning. This is the Athens City Planning Commission, and the date is Wednesday, May 7th. We're here at 11:35 getting started. The first order of business on the agenda is to establish a quorum. We in fact do have a quorum, although we have two members missing, both Mr. Stone, who may be here shortly, and then Austin Phillips, Mr. Phillips, who is away at another engagement today. So having a quorum, we will proceed. The first order, or the next order of business is the disposition of minutes. Everybody should have received those in their packets. I had a chance to look at them. Did everybody else? Is there any corrections or any, anything that needs to be added? Hearing none, then I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes of April 2nd.
So moved.
So moved. Second. You. And all those in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. The next order, well, let me, let me step back. I would like to ask anyone who would plan on speaking today to raise their right hand and, and then ultimately say aye do after I make a statement. So, so any, what I'd like to ask is that anybody who does speak, give, the information they provide us will be accurate and true to the best of their knowledge. And if that's the case, say aye do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So the, the first order of business is case number 25-03, and it's proposed change, code changes to several titles, Title IX, 21, 33, 37, and 44. And the, the information we received also has Shade Tree Commission responses to the code changes. So essentially, most of this, as I've been able to ascertain by looking at it, is basically affecting plantings and, and landscaping in, in our development areas. With that, I would turn to both, either Megan or, or, either, either of you to provide any information to start our discussion. Well, first of all, Mayor, did you want to make a statement at all about this case at this point?
I would, and then we can turn it over to the planner and the Director of Code Enforcement, and then also would like to hear from anyone who wants to speak today. Thank you for being here, or thank you for being willing to speak, Mr. Matlack, Dr. Matlack. You know, in, in looking at this and looking at the comments that have come back from the Shade Tree Commission, what I would like to do is request that we table this case until later notice, so that I and the Commission can do a thorough review of statewide Shade Tree Commissions, or Tree Commissions, or whatever the name is that a municipality may use for similar purpose, and therefore better understand what are potentially some best practices that are out there across the state in terms of what the, the Tree Commissions, Shade Tree Commissions, again, whatever the title of that entity is statewide. So, and it's going to take some time to do that.
So, so do we want to get comments first? Because I think once we make a motion to table, we, that ends all discussion. So we want to be able to get people's discussion.
Yeah. I, I would just say that it, it would be helpful for me to have a little bit more time to spend with the, the proposed changes as well, so that I would appreciate another, you know, the, having another meeting to, to ask other questions after I get more familiar. But with that, Mr. Ricks, would, would you like to start?
Sure. Okay. So these are proposed code changes that we talked about last meeting as a communication. We actually asked comments back from the Shade Tree Commission, and those are included in this packet. One of the things that we were looking at is making some changes to the titles, as you see here. Some of these changes were at the request of the Shade Tree Commission, and some were at the, at the recommendation from, from the staff level. So both of these are combined into these, into these proposed, proposed code changes.
Okay. Ms. Jennings, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I don't really have anything additional. I agree with what Mayor Patterson said, that I think some further research and discussion would be helpful.
Okay. So then with that, does anybody here at the meeting wish to make some comments at this point? Please do. Step to the microphone, state your name and address for us, and, and you may proceed with your comments.
Thank you. Glenn Matlack, Ohio University. We're currently in a phase of rapid climate change, and that expresses itself here in Athens in terms of increased frequency and severity of extreme heat events and more frequent flooding. Now, in Athens, we can't control the climate of the whole planet, but we do have ways of dealing with a climate right here in Athens, fairly simple and cheap ways. And that involves planting street trees. Okay, now I would argue that that is best done by an established commission, independent of the rest of the government, which follows distinct, clearly defined rules and regulations following a long-term management plan. Okay, the alternative, which has been proposed, I believe, is to shift this authority to the executive branch. And that doesn't seem to me to be a good idea, okay, for many reasons. First of all, the executive branch is a small number of people. They do not have the professional expertise in this area. And the nature of government is that it's short-term, it involves a lot of putting out of brush fires. And what I mean is, by brush fires, is small events that crop up and demand 110% of the administration's attention right now. And there are always brush fires. And when an administrator is faced with a brush fire and long-term planning, the long-term planning and administration gets pushed onto the back burner. Okay, now the problem with this is that the long-term events, although they happen on a long-time scale, can become brush fires. Okay, when the flood happens, it is an emergency. When the extreme heat event happens, it is an emergency. Okay? And we suddenly discover that the attention that we have deferred has resulted in a crisis in the short term. It has become a brush fire. And the way to address this, I believe, is to have a independent commission with a set of clearly defined rules and regulations governing the placement and care of street trees, and guided by a long-term management plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish, wish to speak? Okay. Well, with that, then I, oh, go ahead. Yes.
I'll just go ahead and raise a few questions that I have in, in my first review, and I too would appreciate more time. But, and thanks for the comments, Dr. Matlack, and I'm not sure what face an independent commission would have, other than if it sits still under the Tree Commission, but duly noted. I would say that in looking at Ohio Revised Code, Planning Commission is charged with the systematic planning of the municipal corporation, including all the buildings and plantings. So some way, there needs to be a mechanism that we're watchful for that, watchful for climate change, but also watchful to want to say to businesses and developers too, that we want to be a community that we can work together and respond in a timely fashion. I looked at a few other cities and how they manage their Shade Tree Commissions, and found some helpful language with the Village of Granville, because what they do is, they request prior consideration of the Shade Tree Commission before it comes before, and they are an advisory group, so they don't approve or disapprove. But they, they get the first look and the right to review and make a recommendation before any item would become before a planning commission. So I thought that was worth looking at or considering, and to make sure it gets forwarded to them first. I'll, I'll just go through there about three other points. One of them is on the pollinator, as the changes that are proposed right now with the language. I see that part of the language called for eliminating the registration fee. I'm fine with that, but I think at the same time, we eliminated the language for the registration. And so I would argue that I think you need to at least make people be cognizant, aware enough of the, the plan, and that there is a pollinator program, so that, so that we don't have the reverse case when we go to ask somebody to mow their lawn, they go, I'm part of the pollinator program. And if there's no registration, there's no means of enforcement for you all. The 210702, let me just scroll down real quick, because I don't want to take a whole lot of time, but I do think they're worth looking at now, 210702. I have the hardest time scrolling down. Anyway, but I made note that I think it should be both the, the Service Safety Director and the Shade Tree Commission. On 33, I should have done a 210702, I should have done a paper copy of this. On 20, on 33.01.05, my main question, and we can discuss this when it comes back before council, is why we're deleting B. I wasn't sure that I understood why we were going to delete that entire paragraph. And there's probably a logical explanation for it. And then...
Chris, which one was that?
It was 20, oh, excuse me, 33.01.05. And there's a paragraph B in order to meet the comprehensive plan recommendations of 40% shade, shade tree cover. That's the paragraph that's eliminated at this point. So just wanted to understand that better. Moving on, down to 3107.09B. I was, my question was on, that I think that the language, once again, the way we've done it right now, we have deleted the space for, two deciduous trees for each 30 feet. And all it says right now in the revised language is, you'll plant trees along the rear property line. If I was a developer and had to plant trees on the rear property line, I'd say, you didn't say how many, so I'd plant one. So I think we need to be careful that we just, if, you know, deciding on that, like, once again, Granville calls for one, you know, every so many hundred feet, or for every 2,000 square feet of land, or 1,000 square feet of parking area. 310709D, where it says landscape plans shall be submitted, and what I'd say is, I think, prior to consideration by the Planning Commission, that they submit, submit the plan to the Shade Tree Commission. So once again, backing that up and putting it, that, that they would get the right to review and make a recommendation first before it ever comes before us. And I don't think that sets, necessarily sets up, if we set time constraints, I don't think it sets up an unnecessary burden. And maybe it's a matter of, if people want to submit to one place, if they submit it to the code office, then it, it goes there as one place of designation, and then we know that it's spelled out in language, that it would have to go to the Shade Tree first. And you could be the ones, the code office could be the ones submitting it to Shade Tree. I think that was it for now.
Okay. Do you have any comments? Yeah. I mean, the only thing I would say is that I think that what I, what I read, and I briefly read, it, it puts more authority with the Shade Tree Commission to make, make decisions or reject things, as opposed to the way they have been operating, which I think has been to recommend changes or recommend things to the, to the Commission. Isn't that not correct?
I thought they had the right to approve or deny. Which way is it?
For Title 21 subdivisions, they have a right to approve or deny. For Title 41, they're a recommending body only.
Recommending body only. Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion then, at this point, with regard to this case. Is, and is there a motion?
Move that we table until we receive.
I'll, I'll second that motion as well. I think that's, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling the, the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's tabled. Thank you very much. Okay, back to me. So now, we have two communications. The first one is recommendation to City Council to allow the use, a use not permitted in our three zones for 7 North Congress Street, the gathering place, with regard to the huts. David?
So this is actually two similar communications. One is more timely. We have a, we have a request to provide Conestoga Huts at the gathering place, and that's not permitted in an R3 zone. It would be first permitted in a B3 zone, the way our code is currently set up. So we cannot ask, we, if we, if they submitted a use application to the code office for this use, we would deny it, and they would not be able to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance, because that use is prohibited in that zone. You can't get a variance for that. So the only way to get around that, or to, to allow for that use, would be to go to City Council and ask them to allow for a use that's not permitted in the zone. So this is specifically for 7 North Congress. I hope I got that address right. And it's for the, the setting up of Conestoga Huts, which is temporary, temporary emergency shelters for, for people that don't have a place to live. The second piece to this is adding some, some changes to Title 23 to allow to these type of temporary housing shelters. And it's more of a discussion of what the Planning Commission would like to do with that. So this first piece is for a specific event that they, that they would like to do, it's just not permitted.
So one, one question I would have, if, if, if these are temporary huts, do we, do we put a time limit on how long they can be there, and then assume that, you know, that they're removed, or they come back for, for an additional, or for an extension in time, or?
That's a great question for both of these communications. And if that's what the Planning Commission would like to do, I, I, we thought about that, and we think that maybe an annual renewal would be something that we would want to recommend as part of the recommendation to City Council. That they, that they recommend that they approve a use for these, I'm, I'm going to call them temporary housing shelters instead of Conestoga Huts. There are different types. Conestoga Hut is a specific type of shelter. There are all kinds of temporary housing shelters that are available out there. To allow this use in an R3 zone, perhaps with a, with a one-year renewal.
Okay. I appear to Commission. Are there any other questions?
I, I have, yes, I have some questions. Ginger, I'd like to, please, I don't know that when you arrived here, you may want to...
Okay, yeah. So anybody who arrived a little, not that long ago, wasn't here when we started the meeting, I asked anybody who would like to speak to raise their right hand. And, and then I asked them to essentially agree to, by saying aye do, that they will, the information that they provide to the Commission will be true and accurate to the best of their knowledge. Is there anybody else back there who might want to speak? Okay? We got several hands up. So I would ask for an aye do for each of you.
Aye do.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, thank you. Third time's a charm.
Again, several questions, and, and I, I know that you approached me, gosh.
Four years ago.
Thank you.
Yes. Would you like to see a book?
So, no, thank you. I mean, I'm, I'm well aware of Conestoga Villages, I, I would say most notably, one in Eugene, Oregon, which I'm well aware of. I, in full disclosure, I was born in Eugene, Oregon, and grew up in Portland until I ran away, to go to someplace much drier.
It's rainy there, yes.
So, that said, Ginger, how, how, that's been there for the Conestoga Hut that's sitting next to 7?
It hasn't, okay, so that's been there not four years. And we built that during the pandemic, but the plan has been more than four years. When we first started discussions, when there was a previous, there was an Athens, it was a precursor really to what's going on with CoCreate. But it, there was an Athens Homeless Commission, you know, that would meet for several years. And I was on that for three years. And there just really wasn't any action taking place or anything like that. And so we started talking, right? We were on the Zoom. And we've talked about it. And so I, I would say that when we finally got permissions, we did go under the BZA. So we did do everything with zoning. I really followed the guidance of how we would have to turn that letter in. And we got permissions to build, and won a prototype on our site, so folks could see. And we had people visiting all the time, so they could really see. And I'll tell you, it's held up. No one's living in it. But, because we didn't get permissions for that. But I have spent the night in it, just to let you know. Just, I wanted to see, like, when it's 20 degrees out, was I warm in a sleeping bag? And I was. So, yeah, so that's been there at least a couple years, probably, I guess we're in 2025. So I think it's been there for maybe three years, two and a half. Yes. So it's just sitting there. You're right. Yes. But it's held up, so.
It has held up. It's no mystery that we are experiencing, and have experienced for quite some time, a serious chronic housing shortage. And recently displaced individuals, you know, are, are, tend to be the, the primary individuals who find themselves in, in between, in a very difficult situation. Can you, just based on your knowledge of, of facilities like this, and the amenities that are necessary, like restrooms, you know, and the security of that site, and just things you've heard out there, can you describe a little bit of that, Ginger, for all of us, so that we can better understand?
Sure, yes.
How, how these are working? Are they working?
Yes. Well, best practice, you know, that it's usually in a safe-spot community. And best practice is putting them in a parking lot with a fence around. And oftentimes, you'll see porta potties. In Eugene, they have, their city is so involved with different sites, that a lot of them are in church parking lots, and there's bathroom shower facilities. In the very beginning, one reason why we didn't want to place them in our parking lot is because we are growing. We are so expanding with our services and everything we do. We also own the 34 West Washington, and so we have recovery residents, you know, they have cars. Our members, more and more, have cars. We have, we've enlarged our staff, case managers. So we had been renting to 911 as well. And so we have partners that we were renting to help pay the mortgage on our recovery house. But we've been doing better and better, paying that down. And 911 moved recently. And then just the fact, I think you all have gone through with me the, you know, in the last year of trying to last year of trying to get these placed. We thought we had a spot and we didn't, you know, all these different things. And so I've been really, really so grateful to the city for partnering with us in so many different ways to really see, see our unhoused neighbors and doing the EWC was just such a godsend. We were able to house so many people, 35 people. So we know that these would be used. And so what we're just asking is this, to do prototype and have three and restrooms. Okay, so before, when we were going to do another site, you know, I was looking at so many different things. Porta potty for one and, or maybe even purchasing a, like a unit, a mobile unit. But then we were looking at certain sites, it's like, oh gosh, you'd still have to have electricity with this to make these work. So finally, 911 moved. I'm like, well, gosh, we're going to have the space now. And so, and then we have, and so talking with David and Andy, we do have, between the two facilities that we own, we have five bathrooms. And so that means that every one would be for a sink in a bathroom. So that, we do have that. There'll still would be in the evening, you know, porta potty. But we also have cameras. We have a fence that can keep things protected. We have during the day, you know, people can lock this. We have laundry facilities, shower facilities. We serve food every day. We're a community, we're a social community. There's classes, workshops, we're doing legal services. We're getting individuals into housing, like, supporting them as they're working with other agencies to help get that housing voucher, helping people get into sober living rehabs. And we've been quite successful already just with this type of model. Even though we haven't done this yet, we're trying, we were doing it in the firehouse. So I really feel that we have enough support. I think that, I know there's been some pushback and a little bit of nimbie, and I don't mean to say that in a negative way at all, because every community member's voice is so important and what they feel what's going on around them. And we have to be really cognitive of that. But I think most individuals don't mind the gathering, they know what we are. We've been there for 50 years next year. And so it's, it'll be a program, it'll be services on site. And so of course, you know, we have six staff. I mean, we are able to do this. And our members also are a big lead, you know, they're champions, they help. And this, this project just means so much to so many of us because we know it can make a difference. We served 89 unhoused people last year. That's never happened. I've been there 12 years. So we need to come up with some temporary solutions as a community. And that's a lot of the work that we've been doing, the gathering place being involved with CoCreate Collaborative. And, you know, so many people are involved, the city's involved. So, and this was, I was really surprised when we were looking at interim solutions. I was like, great, we're pairing with people, there's going to be better ideas and, but you know what? Everyone said, no, this is the best idea that we can see as an interim solution. So it's not meant for individuals to live there forever, but to rotate as people need a place, a resting spot, where they can lock their things up, they know they're safe at night, they can work on services during the day, be in our social community. But then when they get housing, oh, we now have an empty spot. So that's really what it's meant for. And you know what? I am hoping they're not needed in the next couple of years, but they're needed right now. So, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Good. So you're talking about, this, the proposal here is two new units?
Yes.
To dovetail with the one existing unit?
Correct, correct.
Could I, could I ask, what do you think that parking lot would hold if you wanted to expand beyond three?
You know, I want to be really cognitive because we have a van and we also have people that drive, but it could probably hold more, but I'm not going to ask for that. I want to, I'm not going to ask for that right now. But it could hold more, you know, things outside, it easily could and still allow us to have parking. So it probably could, I feel that it could probably quite successfully hold six at least, yes.
Okay.
But I'm not saying we're going to do that.
And you were here when I, when I raised the question about whether or not there would be an approval for a limited time period?
Right, yes.
And then it could be, in my mind, it could, you could come back and say, you know, we really, this is really, you give us data and everything and you would say, or we could say, yes, let's extend it another year or whatever that time, you know, in your company, okay.
And I just want to work in partnership with the city and our citizens of Athens. I want everyone to be comfortable. But I feel that any project that we have ever done, any expansion we've ever done, we've really always met with success. And, you know, and I, because it's not just us, it's not just me. You know, there's so many people, we have a wonderful board of house members, community members and just other agencies that we partner with that work with us, to support us. So I really feel that we can be cognitive of everyone's needs and that we, you know, really listen, you know, the community member comes and, I've been talking to so many since the last time I was here. Because I want everyone to feel safe. I want everyone to feel that this could be a solution. And, you know, sometimes we have to take those risks, you know?
Well, the Gathering Place is a good organization, in my opinion. I've been, been aware of them for many years, actually served on the board there for a few years.
Did?
Quite some time ago. I couldn't tell you exactly when that was, but it's a great organization. So I appreciate everything you guys are doing, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? Is there anybody else who would like to make some comment? Please, come to the podium, state your name and address for us.
My name is Tammy K. Excellent. I live at 968 East State Street, apartment 25. Why they need these huts, this, whenever I have saw people on the bench, I joke, I choose freezing the bed with no blankets, no covers, no pillows, nowhere to get warm.
Yes. It's, it's, it's challenging, I agree, yes.
And other places, I have seen people sleeping on benches at parks. Yeah, everywhere in town. If you notice the bike path in back of Walmart, people had put in there, they're hungry, they don't know where to go. So I walk the bike path and I tell them, go to the Gathering Place, you can eat.
Thank you.
David Harding, Oregon, 19 East Carpenter Street. And I like to say the Gathering Place has done a lot, good, good for the community. And I think the Conestoga Huts would be an asset to our community right now for people that don't have a place to stay. And I've seen people on the park benches down here too. And the Gathering Place is a resource to help out people.
Thank you. It's, it's interesting because it's in the center of town, but which you could view both positive and negatively. But it's also next to the Gathering Place, which is really an asset, I think, so, yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So did we just deal with both communications or just one communication?
I would do them separately.
Okay. So, so then we're going to, next, so that, so we'll conclude that first communication. And, and every, in two weeks, that should become a case and be a part of a vote here at the commission. The second item, the second communication item is to change, changes to Title 23 to allow temporary housing shelters in a B3 zone as a permitted auxiliary or accessory use. Yes?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. This, these are similar, so we, we have an issue that we wanted to discuss that was pretty time sensitive, but we also wanted to look at being able to make the code changes to allow these types of uses. As, as things evolve, you know, 20 years ago, nobody would have thought about Conestoga Hut or a temporary housing shelter. We want to keep evolving the zoning code to keep up with what's going on today. So this would actually help us. And rather than just calling it Conestoga Huts, there may be different types, as I said earlier. So I'm calling it a temporary housing shelter. We are suggesting, statute is suggesting that it be first permitted in a B3 zone as a permitted accessory use. And we've made the code changes, as you see, to, to make those changes. What I did note, what I would note is that we did ask that these facilities, any of the facilities that we would do in the future, would have one sink and one toilet available within 200 feet of every three units, or every three beds, however you want to look at it. And that we would want to get prior approval from the service safety, I got those backwards, service safety director before asking for a use, that would, a use permit from our
Any, any questions or comments here from the board?
Sure, and I think to kind of provide some clarification, Mr. Chair, and then to the, to the wider public, you know, as we grappled with the particular issues, we wanted to bring these as separate communications for the purposes of allowing the initiatives that the Gathering Place is doing to move forward on one track and meanwhile, talking citywide on another track. As far as how do we, how do we deal with it in the future? And the reason for that is we didn't want to have the, the situation very specific to the Gathering Place and that location get bogged down by perhaps opposition to, you know, a citywide mechanism for approving these. And so that, that was, that was our strategy here. And that's why these are two separate communications. One of the things I think we need to talk about as a, as a commission is, I, I think it's the right path to do an accessory use. So it's basically like an accessory structure and then also to have the extra requirements related to sanitation facilities, because those were our biggest concerns with this. But I, I think we need to have a discussion on the, on the commission about is our, is B3 the right zone that, this is the only place they're allowed in? Should, should B2 be included? Maybe not B2D, but B2? Should R3 be included? Right now, there's no residential use allowed in M zones, right? So when we talk about upzoning and downzoning, the only zone in the city where these would be allowed would be B3s. And is that the correct amount or should it be somewhere else? Because typically you could, you could do anything in a B3 zone, you could do it in an M zone also, except residential. And so it wouldn't be permitted there. So should we, should, should, is this the right level of restriction, I guess, for this? And I think that's worth this discussion.
Yes.
So that would help us, we should probably look at a blown up version of that map, or I should go over and take a look at it for B3, the zoning maps that are here available. I have a question that relates back to the, what the proposed language, it's actually the sentence before it. So this is all under B3 and it's saying, here are permitted accessory uses. And that one, I'm just confused. I just need it clarified. It from, it says for B1, accessory uses and structures is permitted and regulated in the B1 zone and such other accessory uses and structures not otherwise prohibited. Customarily accessory and incidental to any of the foregoing permitted B2 uses. I don't understand that. I'm sorry.
That is rough language, it's male.
I've read it through three times and I still don't understand.
That's what's early in the code and I didn't, I didn't look at changing that. So that's what we currently have in the code is, as this accessory use, I just simply added the B.
Right, I know. But I'm saying while we're looking at it...
We'll take a look at that and maybe clarify.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad it's not just me.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
I know with the Conestoga Huts, we just had that conversation. Is there, do we, are we going to include somewhere in the definitions section defining temporary housing and what that looks like? And the reason I'm asking is, I'm a realist, you know, I fully recognize, and I hope most of you who are here today recognize this as well, is if you look in any of our large parking lot areas here in the city of Athens, and there are people living in their cars. And so that we, I need, we need to be really clear as to what constitutes, you know, temporary housing. I would contend, although it's, it's fact, it's happening, that unfortunately cars are being used for temporary housing and they, they, and there, we're not even going to go there, but I am going to mention that I have, you know, been doing my own homework and recognizing that there are municipalities that have set aside parking lots that have amenities in those parking lots as a safe parking space for someone who is living out of this, out of their car. I'll, I'll share with you, the most recent that I came across was in a place that was kind of mind boggling to me and it shouldn't be. It's Vale, Colorado. You know, Vale, Colorado has set aside a parking lot, a parking lot in an area that has extremely high rents, extremely high, you know, base prices for a home, which a lot of people can't even touch it. But there's the service providers that still have to work and provide the amenities and the services in those, that, whether it's the ski resort, it's the village, it's ski shops, it's whatever. And we're no different. Athens is no different from, from that. And so, again, I, I'll get off my soapbox. But I think the point is, we need to be really clear with what we're defining as the temporary But I think there's a bigger conversation to be had in terms of what people are literally being forced to have to live out of. And don't even get me started on the mental crisis that's happening across this nation when it comes to mental wellness, which they go hand in hand. I'm not saying one leads to the other, I'm just saying that we live in a really complex point in time and housing has kind of grown there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
A question for, for David. David, today, if I, if I owned a camper and I wanted to live in it, what zone could I do that in, in the city, if anywhere?
So currently you could do that in a residential zone if it's a temporary housing while you're building a residential structure.
And that's any residential zone?
Yeah, in a residential zone, you're allowed to temporarily use a camper to live in. I think there's a time limit on it, it might be a year or something. Then, then it goes to a B3 zone is the first place that camping or a camper is allowed to use.
Okay.
So it is in a B3 zone.
And so that's distinct from this temporary shelter as a, because, you know, camper is kind of a, like an all-inclusive abode because it's got a restroom facility in it and it, and it's mobile and with a, with a waste tank and that sort of thing. Okay. And so we're really talking about something different than a camper here. We're talking about something that doesn't have a restroom facility, but allowing it to be in proximity to a place that does as an accessory structure in a B3 zone, but only a B3.
Yeah, we specifically call out in the, in the, in this section that it's a, it's a housing structure that doesn't have a restroom or kitchen. So that's the way we've defined this temporary housing shelter.
What do you think the risk could be, or if there are risks to this, you know, unintended consequence? I mean, certainly the, the positive use of, I mean, dealing with unhoused population in a temporary nature is, is a, is a problem we're trying to solve. What's the, what's the risk that we could run into?
You could have, you could have folks that are trying to access and use a, like a storage unit. We see that sometimes, those are really not adequate uses for that. However, that structure is permanently fixed, so that's not allowed the way we've got the code set up. We also see the shipping containers. Again, those are not, without a lot of work, those are not very effective shelters. I think that would not be allowed here as well. So we're trying, we're trying to, to kind of get a definition, a little clear definition of what we would allow and what we wouldn't. So campers, not, not included in this, living in a, living in a, a fixed shelter, not really allowed with this use. This would be for temporary shelters that aren't affixed to the ground.
Okay. So a tent, because they're generally affixed to the ground, doesn't...
I wouldn't consider that a fix, yeah.
Okay, so that would be temporary.
Yeah, I would, I would expect a tent could fit under this definition, yes.
So right now, a tent would not be allowed in a B3?
That's correct.
And, and this, and now a tent would be allowed in a B3?
Yes.
Anything else here at the commission level? Is there anybody who would like to speak to this communication in the audience? Okay, hearing none, then, oh, we do have one, I'm sorry.
So Rob Delich, live on 124 Morris Avenue here in the city. And I agree with Director Stone's possibly broadening this some to include R3 zone, I think would make some sense in other potential B zones. I think that makes a lot of sense. So my first thought when I was looking at this was, why not include R3? I think it makes sense to do those kind of things. And I think doing it right the first time solves problems later and makes it less work because undoubtedly we probably would end up changing that in the future if we didn't loosen it a little right now, I think. So that's one thing that I had to say, there was something else, but I probably won't remember what it was now. Thanks.
Thank you.
I had two other things I wanted to just note here that you may want to think about with this, with the zoning change. One is, we didn't specifically say whether or not porta potties could be used as the toilet and sink facilities. I think some of the new... I think some of the new facilities actually have a little push, foot push so you can wash your hands and clean up. So I didn't specify whether that would be allowed or not. That's something you may wanna think about if you really don't wipe the portlets and, and associated with this, or if you think that's a great idea. I, I kinda left that available for discussion. And the other, the other point here, just as we've talked about, is on the previous communication, maybe we wanna have a time limit on this as well. So you do a, a year renewal and include that in here. And that's something you should, you should maybe consider as well.
I, so, so, so for instance, with a tent, I mean, I mean, who, who are, or any of these? You have to have an entity that's gonna be responsible that has the, the restroom facility, either if, if a portlet is considered possible. Would have to maintain those, take care of those, have them established, pay for them? That's correct. Okay. Yeah. So this is not something an individual can do? I guess an individual who might own a piece of property that's vacant in a B3 or whatever zones are permitted.
Not in this, not the way this is set up because this is a permitted accessory use. You can't have an accessory use without primaries. You could not do this on vacant piece of property. If parking lot would be a use, so if a primary use in a B3 is a parking area, this could be an accessory use to the parking, but a vacant lot, no.
Okay.
On those lines, R3, could I go down Mill Street? And in the parking lot next to my rental house, could I put 10 tents? And then rent those tents also because the bathroom's in the house?
Because the Safety Service Director has a right to veto this beforehand, you could say no.
Well, I'm the Safety Service Director. I don't have a rental house on Mill Street, but, all right. I mean, honestly, that, that is, that is, I mean, that's a consideration, right?
It's kind of a safety plug that we put in there.
That, I mean, like, the intent with this is temporary housing to, to solve a problem. It's not to create.
10 new problems.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else from the audience or from the commission or from our staff? Hearing none, then we will look at this again in two weeks, I assume, if we had, and, and, and maybe make some decisions at that point. The next item on the agenda are reports. And so is there, Mr. Riggs, do you have any additional information to report to us today?
Just that Blackburn Landing that was approved a few meetings ago is, they've, they've submitted their application package and are, we're reviewing it. Probably will soon receive approvals in the next week or two, and they wanna start construction in June. So Blackburn Landing was, the construction could start as early as June. And that's all I have.
Ms. Jennings, do you have anything for us today?
The only thing I'd like to mention at the last meeting, and this is related to the potential rezoning of the Lancaster, Columbia hub in town. And at the last meeting, I provided a map of current land uses and before that, had provided some proposed rezoning maps. And so I just wanted to check in with the planning commission and just share that if you all have specific comments or we would like to have a larger discussion about that, I think that we could definitely set up a space for that. And I do think it would be important to bring, host some sort of public engagement meeting as well with that neighborhood to see feedback wise what they think would be appropriate for new zoning definitions.
You're, what I recall is that you were going to look at that original proposed zoning, zoning map that you had put together to make any adjustments. Have you made any adjustments at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay. So then I will commit to look at that in the next week or so here and try to get you any comments I might have compared to the, the current use. Anybody else on that? No? Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. So this is an opportunity for citizens, citizens to speak on items not covered in the agenda. Does anybody have something they'd like to say? All right. Provide information to the commission. Doesn't look like that's the case, so are there any other announcements? Anybody have any announcements here at this point? Or any other business? And I assume that's not the case. Okay. Rob?
I thought for sure you'd get up and talk about Porch Fest.
Okay. So then the next meeting, the next scheduled meeting would be May 21st, two weeks from today. So with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.